Okay, time is 6:05. Welcome to the workshop. We have a pledge of allegiance and I'll open the sideboard.
I stand, Joe, as a president. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to our republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the highest.
Please remain standing for more deciders.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda?
Could you name us president, trustees, and members of the I's? No changes to the agenda.
Under District Operations.
Mr. President, under D O one, discussion of possible action to approve the service agreement between the S F S P PAC Division of the Fortune Pack Chemical Corporation and Donna ISD for the 2017-2018 school year. This is for child nutrition program and what we do have is coming from the Region One Co-op. There were five individual vendors that are on that bid. However, only this one was the one submitted a bid and we have been going with this individual vendor. Our district has been with it. The reason why it's coming to U S Trustees for approval right now is because previously it was under the $20,000 first part and now that we're over the $25,000, that's why it's coming to you. It is currently at $49,852.84. There are no questions. Administration recommends approval.
What is it that this company provides for child nutrition?
They're the detergents, the all-purpose cleaner, the product detergent, the hand soap, sanitation, and safety service. Anything else that I might have forgotten?
Yeah, any just carry on.
Oh, you don't guess that? There you go. That's what that was.
Yes, I do, because it is a neat product. Bottom line, we have all these four and they'll turn itself on in a clean way. And they come, actually, the chemicals actually come in this box. All the chemicals are labeled in English and in Spanish and so are the bottles. They're labeled in English and Spanish. They're all on the line. And so bottom line is into the day, they are really the only ones that bid because they are really the only company I think that suits everybody's needs. So everything comes free packaged. They put it in, you fill it up to the water line, and you shake it and it won't comply. Sanitizers, anything that we clean or wash dishes or anything in the kitchen. And so they are really the only bidders. And so every year, I mean, we've been using them as long as I've been there that I know of. And there was really nobody else that bid. We did try to compare at one time because, you know, $50,000, $50,000 seems like a really big amount, but the other companies want installer, want machines, and they pretty much monopolize, you know, the chemical they put in there. And there really is no way of telling if people are putting one or two or three. With a four, they can put in as much soap as they want. And this one, we have to check it. We log it in, they cut it. Like when they wash the dishes, they would complain that there was no soap. Why? Because then they, you know, they put a lot more soap than they need. And so this one, they actually, you know, cut it up, they put it in the sink, they have to check the pH level to make sure it's in compliance with the chemicals. And so I've been there in and out five years and I've never heard any chemical complaints come forth. They also do all the training for our employees. They charge us per student, per meal, based on the last snapshot. And once they set their rate here, it can't go up.
So there's 50, 49, 995?
Yeah, it's set.
Okay, that's it for the year.
Yeah, it just happens to be at that amount because it's .016 cents per meal. Each lunch is one equivalent, each breakfast is one third of an equivalent. So they divide the breakfast by three, the lunches, they multiply by one and a half, 1.6 cents a day, and then they multiply that by the days of operating. So if we're gonna use more soap, they have to bring it for the same cost.
How often are they doing the site visits, it says? Because it includes education as well. How often are they sent?
They go, at least every two weeks, they go to leave chemicals. And every month, they go and they follow up on the logs. So when T E A comes down, they see that we have portion pack, they don't even really, they check to see if the logs exist, but they know that if you're using this company, you're pretty much in compliance.
Okay, and so the education, what is this education portion that it includes? I see the description here. Educational materials, does that mean somebody's coming and training our employees?
Yes, they have to be trained in pass up, which is pretty much the temperatures on the chemicals. And so the ladies have been there a while, a lot of them, they pretty much know what they should do and not do. And so, because they can't really go and cut two of these open, they know that it's only one, they cut it open, they put it in the container, they fill it up with the water, they shake it, and that's it. So there's no overpouring or contaminating or anything of any other sort. And we don't allow them to bring any other chemicals into the kitchen. If they do, then they won't get written up, but they know that these are the only chemicals we use. These are certified, they're trained for them, and we have logs where they're ready.
Mrs. Quintanilla, there's no doubt you're in favor of a portion pack, but isn't it kind of odd that it's only one vendor supplying this?
And you know what? It's like that with a lot of stuff with child nutrition. It's very, it's very odd that there is only one vendor, but this vendor's actually out of Chicago and most of the valley uses them and not all the local districts.
Most of the districts are using them?
All the districts use them.
All the districts use them?
All the districts use them. And so like I said, when I went in the department, I kind of questioned, like, that's a lot of money. But then when we started looking at alternative, you know, products where they put, we can buy the product, put it on the wall, we buy our own, we cannot assure the safety, plus we have to do our own training and be liable for it. So this company, they pretty much, you know, put all that on the line.
They monopolize it.
Yeah, they, yeah, they pretty much do.
Was it Noriega and nothing else?
It takes a second guessing out of having to admit and major.
I get all that part, but I still think it's kind of odd. I wouldn't want to be out there bidding on something like that if there's only one. Is it Noriega, nothing else comes in on the procurement process in regards to?
Nothing else comes in.
Are they part of that awarded vendor?
The Co-op.
It's the Co-op.
On one of the sheets, let me get you on a copy. It's kind of hard to see, but it shows where they would bid out. And there are five vendors for the category, but they're the only ones that bid for that portion of.
This is paid right here. They're little, teeny tiny, but you can see all of them.
Yeah. It's on the last page. It's on the website, on the campuses Co-op, if you want to check it out, but, I mean, it comes out as what it is. We wish we had more choices, but unfortunately, these people are the only ones. And like I said, we tried looking to alternatives and the price could just be out of control. And the liability of them overpouring chemicals into like a container or, you know, putting more than they're supposed to doesn't offset savings of any. It was a lot more than what this cost. That was about two or three years ago that we tried to see if we could, you know, go another route. Apparently, the district sometime, I guess, early on, had done that because some of the campuses have those things on the wall. And the lady said, "No, we don't want this though," because the ladies, we have to be watching them, that they don't be pouring and pouring because they want to see all these bubbles, right? When you wash dishes. And with this one, you don't see bubbles, but it's cleaning the dishes, you know, properly, and they're not putting too many chemicals into the water.
I move we approve.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the second by Mr. Vena. Second by Mr. Guerrero. All in favor?
In favor.
Me too. Executive Services, thank you.
A S one, Mr. President, trustees. Discussion of possible action on the approval of the memorandum of understanding from South Texas College Dual Credit Program. And this is something that we do on a year-to-year basis. This basically says that Donna ISD and S T C will be in agreement with regard to the dual credit for both high schools. And this is to deal with S T C, South Texas College. Administration recommends approval.
It is a recommendation to approve.
I move we approve.
The motion by Mr. Vena.
Second.
Second by Mr. Guerrero. All in favor?
In favor.
Mr. Harris.
A S two, Mr. President, trustees. We have discussion of possible action on the approval of the University of Texas On-Ramps Dual and Dual Program Agreement for 2017-2018 school year. Once again, this is for both high schools. And at this time, we have Donna High School with three courses that they have been registered for and the teachers are trained. And Donna North High School, we have eight courses with UT On-Ramps. And this is second year that we'll be with particular program. And the teachers, like I said, are there and the students are in schedule.
What is the difference between Donna North and Donna High School?
The difference on that is the teachers that go because they have to get a training in the summer and teachers have to be able to wait for the summer. So we missed that because we got six and ten agents.
I think this is one of the really great things that our district does. I mean, for a student to get credit from UT Austin, it just helps to make that bridge to college even stronger. So I think it's great. I'm glad we're doing it.
If I may add, it's very rigorous.
We couldn't get, Cynthia, we couldn't get more teachers to sign up for this?
Well, at Donna High School, we have teachers with masters already and they're doing dual enrollment, the S T C program. So that's a part. And what the UT On-Ramps does is we have teachers that do not have a master. And so they're the liaison between the University of Texas and our professor and the student. So they're the ones that network and that's how you can get more kids to dual credit in a different format, to provide that student the opportunity. And so we have both. We have teachers, teachers that we already have on campus, the district, English, science, and math, those teachers are already with us. So the kids that do not meet the criteria for T S I, unfortunately, they need it in December, you get teachers that do not have a master in that area to be able to teach through UT Austin because that's the agreement. And that's one of the powerful things that we have on the campus. And now with T STEM, it should grow even more.
So those teachers who have just a bachelor's will go to UT Austin for the summer?
Very rigorous.
Get trained.
Yes, very rigorous. And they come back very excited and with the intent of wanting to even pursue the masters in that sector.
And we couldn't get any more teachers to step up?
At Donna High, that's a good group that we have. So if we get more, as we're offering more classes, we should as soon as we get the next cohort of T STEM. And the idea with early college, we hope to make sure we're fine for, the idea is to get more teachers, different sort of degree in college, but it's going to be in masters, but it's going to be so marketable in the valley and we hope that we don't lose those teachers to other districts. Because you have a whole campus, like Robert Vella High School, they got, you know, when you look at their stars, more kids are taking the exam and they're accumulating more stars and getting more points on the, according to the methodology of the equation to get those fours, to get a star, that's what we're wanting to do. But we don't want to lose the teachers who want to sustain them at the high school. And so the more kids that you get to go enroll, to be enrolled in, they'll be able to take college courses. As a matter of fact, the memorandum of understanding with S T C now, if any student enroll at Donna High or Donna North, if they choose to take courses outside of the high school, they don't have to pay for their classes anymore at S T C.
Wow.
That's new and that's exciting because these kids in break weight is more.
Are we going, are we going, when you're recruiting teachers for, also for a T STEM?
T STEM. So the next cohort is, the idea is to recruit another group of teachers.
Are we going to, my concern is this, is we train them, we get them, I mean, do we have, yeah, that's what I'm gonna say, are they gonna be, you know, going to other schools?
We hope not. So whatever district.
Can we do like a contract or an M O U with them that they're grand?
I think, in speaking with other administrators and others, just high schools and also teachers at the T STEM, they also cite them. That's what keeps them on campus.
I was gonna say, I mean, we're putting money into the teachers or educating them, we're giving them the opportunity to provide these, this training, we're paying for it, and next year they'd be, you know.
Something inviting for them to stay. Well, like, for instance, we have a teacher that's with the Harvard program, she gets her masters in December. Patricia Ivanko, we already have Kristen Masina teaching the upper level courses. So when she gets her degree, the idea is for her to follow the cohort. So that's what we told them, we want you to follow the cohort. So the 125 freshmen that you have will maybe become sophomores, we want them to continue. But right now, Patricia will be teaching like Geometry Pre-A P, Geometry T STEM, Algebra One and Algebra One Pre-A P. So the other two courses are the next level, let's say Algebra Two, because she needs to know that material so that when the kids move up, she'll be ready to, you know, critique by class. But the kids that are freshmen, Geometry Pre-A P, the next class will be Algebra Two, then Precalculus. And we're hoping that they take the calculus and AP Statistics so that they can get, because these kids are T STEM, just a reminder, they're math and science. So they will take that, and that's the idea.
Yeah, I know that, I mean, I went to the insurance secretary. You know, so, you know, I'm sort of picking up the pieces and, you know, it's a great opportunity for Donna ISD and Donna North and Donna High School to provide this for our kids. And, you know, it's great for our teachers, we're training them, we're preparing them, we're naming the foundation for their future, you know. So I'm just, it would be cool if we could find some way to say, hey, we need a four-year commitment from you guys. You know, like a cohort, when you enter a college masters program, you know, the district will pay for it, but, you know, we need a commitment from you for a year or two or three, you know, I would be somewhere, I don't know whether legal can look into this, that, you know, we could find some way.
We need to just take care of the teachers and they'll stay.
And that's something as a board, I think we also need to make, like, they say, you know, put your money where your mouth is, you know, and then maybe give them that nice stipend, you know, that we can.
Or a tiered stipend, where the longer they stay, the higher it goes. But keep them.
So these courses, the three and the eight, those are STEM courses or no, it's a mix of courses?
Okay, so are you talking UT On-Ramps or?
The three, the On-Ramps.
On-Ramps, they are your kids that are, like, the staff is a freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior level class. So those are not STEM, but they could be part of STEM, they're UT On-Ramps. The kids that are in STEM, the freshmen right now, are in pre-AP courses. The idea is to test them T S I earlier to know where their weakness is so we can get them ready for the T S I, to get ready to take those content courses.
Oh, so this program and the T STEM, they're kind of, they're separate, but they kind of coordinate?
And the T STEM, this is our freshman, our freshman cohort.
They have a lot of opportunities, Melis. The beauty of all this dual enrollment, everything.
Any questions?
Yes, the agreement that we're looking at tonight, is it similar to what was done in last year as well? Nothing's changed?
Yes, as far as I know, nothing's changed.
Because I have nothing to compare to, that's why. I'm asking if we're adding or taking away. Okay, no further questions for me.
Would you like to make a motion to accept M O U? Is the motion by Mr. Guerrero to accept to approve the M O U?
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Dolitt. All in favor?
In favor.
Mr. Harris.
Mr. President, trustees. As noted on D F one, the budget workshop is this year, 2017-2018. And again, this is, I appreciate y'all being here because this is exactly where you are returning to the workshop. This is Martina and her team, business office colleagues, brought by the little binder.
Good evening, Board, community members and colleagues. My name is Hannah Rockina from the final chapter, and we're here to go over our year's final budget. We're not working on this budget. We start working in February and we're just about completed with it, so we want to share with you guys and get your input.
When is our timeframe, timeline in order to approve?
We have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, at which time we will approve.
It needs to be approved by the end of August because the fiscal year runs from September one to August thirty first.
Yeah, exists a lot to absorb tonight and we have to.
And your executive. That was a whole logic behind it, recall, we didn't really have this, but we discussed this past.
I do want to make it known, we have an allocation history, a five-year allocation history that we didn't have a chance to put into the binder, and also a personnel detail report that those will be emailed and all be hard copies. Also, really, what Terry, if you want to pick them up in the morning.
All right.
In addition, I wanted to recognize our staff. We have Jerika Vassal, who's the county supervisor right here next to me, who's put in numerous hours working on the budget. We also have Rigo Garcia, Abraham Daigles, and Lydia Rodriguez, who have also spent a lot of time helping us with this.
Thank you for the time, which I put in, and I appreciate it very much. And we'll be making some phone calls throughout the week, beside board.
Okay. Okay, first of all, when we begin the budget process, we have district goals that were there from previous years. So what we did is we, we used, we didn't use all of them, we used most of them in our consideration when we had our meetings with the principals, directors, and hires with our campus members. So one of the goals was Donna ISD students will achieve academic success in all facets of their education, to relevant, rigorous, and aligned curriculum. The second one was Donna ISD will pride students and all stakeholders with a safe and nurturing school environment that supports academic success. And the third one is Donna ISD will follow sound, physical, and general practices to provide a highly qualified staff, appropriate resources, technology, and well-maintained facilities to promote increased student achievement. And the fourth one is Donna ISD will collaborate with parents, community members, and staff to promote continuous success for all students through an effective planning and advisory policies. So we have just, we have a lot of priorities, but there was three that we actually considered a lot to, to vary in the budget. Actually, there's four. We wanted to meet the student academic needs, we wanted to present a balanced budget, we wanted to maintain healthy student-teacher ratios, and of course, the equal opportunity educators. Our budget timeline. We started the budget planning process that I mentioned earlier in February, and we're now in August, we're almost at the end of the fiscal year. We collaborate with principals, directors, and senior leadership. We've had meetings with the budget committee and we have budget workshops for the board. T E A recommends, or actually, we have to follow T E A's section forty-four point zero zero two through forty-four point zero zero six, that establishes legal basis for budget development. The superintendent is the budget officer for the district and prepares, our con is the budget to be prepared. We're required to hold a public hearing, which involves budget and tax rate, which is scheduled for August twenty-second. And we're also, we have to adopt the final budget by August thirty-one, twenty-seventh. At this time, when the, when Rigo come on, he's our cash accountant, and he helps us a lot with the revenue and tax.
Good afternoon, my seat belongs to all of you for the first time. I'm just going to talk about the taxes, of course answering any questions that you guys may have. So where does our money come from? It's from state revenue. State aid projections are based on fourteen thousand two hundred ninety-nine eighty-eight. Approximately seventy-one percent of the total revenue budget comes from the state revenues. Five percent of this amount represents TRS on behalf. December is depending on payroll. The local revenue, local property revenue, based on fifty percent increase from 2017 certified values. So our revenue is broken up into a few sections. The bulk of it is under Foundation Program. For the seventeen, sixteen, seventeen school year, we're about one hundred and nineteen million and eight nine seven. And the second is property taxes. The property taxes is at fourteen point five million, and nutrition, children's, is at twelve point five. TRS on behalf is at ten point nine, and a little bit of savings is at two point nine. We want to show you a picture of what we're, of the main program. And for the proposal, on our right side, I don't know if you guys can see it, but again, the bulk of it is under Foundation Program.
Will I be able to get that on paper, hard copy?
Of course.
Is that, that's not in our.
Oh, right here, we have something right here.
Oh, this is something you passed on, okay. I'm sorry.
Go to the third, go to the third page.
Okay. I apologize, continue, sir. I needed, I need to look at it instead of that.
Of course. So as far as our expert cost for quality schools, we would have to broke it up.
Can you pause? I can ask a question on the previous.
Of course.
So if we're looking at this right, so, so if I'm, I need to make sure I'm reading this right. So the actual revenue for, let's say, 2015 to 2016 was one hundred and sixty-four point nine million.
That's correct.
Right? And then, so it went down last year. We had about four million less than we did the previous year, yes?
Correct.
Okay. And then we're anticipating we'll have four million dollars, four point four million dollars more-ish than we did last year, is that right?
Yeah.
And so that difference, we're predicting that it's coming from where property taxes and TRS on behalf?
Yes.
Okay, and then can you explain again what TRS on behalf is?
The TRS on behalf is our retirement plan. And so the district contributes a certain amount into that plan, and so we have to record it. It's like a filter, we collect it and then we send it off to TRS.
So what makes us think that we're going to get about three million more from there in the property taxes? Help me a little understand the, I need to understand the value to me, what the projection and why it's about four million dollars more?
Yes, our property tax appraised values have increased. They went up about fifteen percent. So we are budgeting based on that. We're a little bit more conservative, we didn't go the whole fifteen percent, but that is what the appraised values came in from the appraisal district. And that's why they're in.
And then what about the TRS on behalf? What makes the difference?
The TRS is based on the payroll. So this is a percentage of however much a person earned. So we just took the payroll that was in the system and we, they calculate that as part of it.
So does that mean we have more, what's, since it's based on the payroll, does that mean we have more people this year? And that's why it's?
No, actually, we're missing two months of actual data that hasn't been posted. We're missing July and August on the actuals. And it's about, you know, so it's about two million per month.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
But you're saying that the TRS on behalf is just a flow-through?
It's a flow-through.
You transmit it from the employee, put it into our cash account, and then from there, write a check and pay the TRS, right?
But we also contribute a portion to it. So it's the employee portion and the employer portion. Yes, so, but we are required to be paid.
Thank you.
On the next slide, we did want to show an average, Donna citizen pays, their average taxable value is about for 2017-18 is about forty-four thousand. We wanted to show you the breakdown. So they're moving for the school about five hundred sixty-six dollars and obviously monthly it's forty-seven dollars. This is calculated by one hundred dollars, out of one hundred dollars, one dollar and twenty-five cents ghosted eyes. This next slide is a by-return analysis of the tax collection ratio. We wanted to show the tax levy has been increasing steadily. Right now, we're going to be predicted about fifteen point two million. So we've been pretty healthy for the past five years. It's been growing, and it's still not accurate. For the tax proposals, we're currently staying the same at our M and O is at one dollar and seventeen cents. The INS rate's still at zero point zero eight two. And our proposal news is about one point four billion. And our levy is broken up from M and O at fifteen point one million and our INS tax levy is at one point one. So we're trying to still be modest at sixteen or, and as you can see, it is a percent difficult of about fifteen percent. On that side, it's the, the left side. So I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Harris.
Mr. Board, super excited. How present, representing the.
How representative do you present the budget book numbers? Each one of you's got a, a kit with all of the numbers from the budget book. So I wanted to go over the revenue sources. And what I did is we broke it out here for you. In regards to the general fund, because it's just a concentrated look at the general fund. Now, I'm just going to touch on a few areas that Rigo Garcia just touched on. So again, our levy, our levy, our budget amount is fifteen point one million. Our actuals to date is thirteen point seven. And of course, we still have to collect a little bit. Other revenue, other tax revenue. We set our budget at one point one. And for billing the taxes, you can see that we only collected about half a million dollars. So we need to do a little bit of work with perhaps our collecting tax attorneys in order to make sure that they collect for the next year. To collect everything that they can. So we're perfecting the process of working with them to make sure that they're on point with that for the next four years. Okay, our other tax revenue, which includes our rollback penalties. What's to amount is eight hundred thousand. And today, we collected about half a million. Other local revenue, budgeted amount is seven hundred thousand. And this includes athletics, sales, food service. And we've collected eight hundred and fifteen these months.
This is what the district generates?
Yes, this is all itemized of revenue.
I can football take the X.
Our state is broken out into our state foundation program. Our actuals this year, we've collected to date a hundred and nineteen point eight million. And we budgeted conservatively based on the summary finance from TEA at a hundred and seventeen point two. Okay, other tax revenue, which includes our TS on behalf payments and Medicaid reimbursement. Actuals to date of nineteen point eight million. And we budgeted conservatively at fifteen point one.
So Jerry, why are we, I mean, budgeting conservatively and budgeting four million dollars less?
Well, when it comes to revenue, you always want to make sure that you understood it a little bit. Because you don't know if things are going to happen with the state. They're going to change funding, you're going to get less. So on the revenue side, our financials, we want to make sure it's understood just a little bit, just in case that happens, okay?
So up to, actual, up to today, or to, to, through the figures, we've got nineteen million. Next year, you're saying, well, we're going to say that we're only going to get fifteen. That gives us a cushion of four million dollars that we might get?
Yes, we may.
And we may not. So it's better to under?
Go to the lower. So our federal revenue, our child nutrition program is the main program there. And our actuals collected to date is twelve point one million. And we're right on target with that. We went ahead and budgeted that way based on prior year analysis. That's how much we think we're collecting in the past four or five years, so. Other federal revenues includes our E-rate and food service indirect costs. We collected one point three. And our budgeted amount is two point four. Here's a look at our expenditure summary in total for the general operating fund. We've done some extensive work with HR, as well as a lot of the other directors, academic directors. We'd like to make some thank you to them. They've been very monumental in setting the budget. And we've cut a lot of costs and set plans for the next four years in order to meet our goals. So personnel, our budgeted amount is a hundred and eleven point five. Year-to-date actuals is a hundred and five point seven. Miscellaneous salaries, this includes things like stipends, overtime, and other small allowance stipends that we give to our administration. Our budgeted amount is right around four million. And we paid out to date three point seven. We still have about two months to pay, or a month and a half to pay. Our campus allocations. Our memo total, our budget memo total is three point one. And year-to-date, they spent two point, two point zero. Our departments, we budgeted forty-six million. And we spent forty-nine point two. So a lot of the work that we've done is actually in personnel and our departments. Here's a detailed look at our personnel. The big item is, is our instruction. So our budget came in at sixty-nine point two million. And today, and to date, we paid out sixty-five million. Of course, we still have to pay another month, so I'll put it there.
Mr. Castillo, I have to just say, you know, we spend a tremendous amount for, for coffee machines and what have you. This is not even legible, sir. This fine print that I got here is.
Oh, it's because that, it's because the?
How can I take this home instead?
Actually.
They can email it to you.
Can we send it electronically or make a copy? They're really trying to take picture of your phone.
Actually, how the screen actually have all those amounts in your, in your report.
Yeah, this is in here, John.
I really do need it in paper because to, for me, to have it on, looking at it on screen, I have nothing.
So all of this, John, is in here?
Well, I will see how it's written there.
Okay, so go to page, go to, see where it says personnel. So go to your expenditures tab, okay? Yeah, go to expenditures.
Okay.
Okay, and then the first page there is the overview. So you see those big, big, big categories? And then as you're, as you're flipping, then it goes into every single category. So this next part is all the personnel costs. And so the next page is representative of what you see on this slide.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
How are you aware of this?
I'm just looking at it.
We just got to show you.
What is, what is?
I'm just looking at it.
This, Mr. Roman, is your PowerPoint, again, if you want to take notes inside. However, yes, Craig, this is your actual report.
So in each of these categories right here?
We'll be happy to print the PowerPoint.
I would need it for you.
Can you save it on this?
But just know that the data that's in here is the same as the data, is the numbers that are in here.
Category.
It's the same.
All right.
Okay? And so like, for, so if you think of like, big, big, big categories here, each of the subsections underneath behind this goes into more detail on what each one of those is.
We'll go back. I apologize for the interruption. This is needed to clarify, thank you.
It's going to be honestly, even when they print out the data, John, it's going to be easier to read.
Yeah, that's what I need. I'm having a difficult time following them. All right.
Okay, as Miss Sandy Martinez mentioned earlier, you will also receive a detailed report capturing every position in the district and every budgeted amount, as well as some other data on there so that you can make comparisons. Okay, recently salaries. This comprised of stipend salaries, substitute costs, travel allowances, and part-time employees, and also overtime. Okay, our athletic activities stipends, pretty much in line with what we had last year. One point three budgeted, and today we paid out one point three. Our fine arts stipends. We budgeted one hundred and ninety-four thousand, and we paid out two hundred and twenty-six thousand. Special education activities. We budgeted a hundred and sixty-one thousand and paid out a hundred and fifty-six point nine thousand. Substitute costs, we don't have substitute costs planned for the next four years. I've outsourced to Union One. And they're targeting some of our. Travel allowances. We budgeted a hundred and ten thousand, and we spent a hundred and twelve this year. We had a few positions that have closed, and that's why we expect to see savings next year. Our part-time employees include auxiliary subs and parent-tenant elders. We budgeted six hundred and twelve. And I apologize, I, it looks like we have a number missing there. But I'll make sure to get that to you, and you can compare. And our overtime pay. Overtime, we've done some extensive work in that, in that field. And we actually have a part of the presentation where Mr. Abraham Daigle's going to come and share some of the work that we've done regarding our overtime.
Can you go back one slide, please? Oh, okay, so I think I'm looking at the page right before the page, the stipend salary page. So in this, in this code thirty-four, student transportation. It's, so year-to-date totals for student transportation is like forty-nine thousand. And then next year, we're budgeting that'll be around a hundred and eighty-nine thousand? Can, can you, it's right here. It's the page right before.
Page one on miscellaneous salary costs.
So he was showing us this right here. And what I was looking at was just this right here. I was just curious, that seems like to be a big difference. And what are we, are we anticipating something?
Yes, so we've saved a lot in fuel within the past couple of years. We've got it to where we actually almost break even. So in that regard, that's, that's an area that we worked on in the transportation department in order to kind of curb our cost savings.
Oh, so we, so that, so. So but next year, we're not anticipating we'd have those same savings?
Right. And also, as another note, as we go through our year-end process, there's a lot of activity that still needs to hit for about two months. So that, that's the difference there.
Are you also doing budget adjustments for this forty-nine, forty-nine million? Forty-nine million, forty-nine thousand?
Where?
On this under student transportation?
No, forty-nine thousand.
Yeah, forty-nine thousand. You're saying that that's all we spent, actual to date?
There's something wrong with that.
Is, is that part of the trip tracker that we discussed about? Just to get some open transactions over there?
That's, that's like a hundred and forty thousand dollar difference.
Yeah, that's always curious, what the expenditure you say is a lot lower than next year?
You gotta keep going.
I think it's just, it's just basically.
It's different. Keep going to the next one.
Oh, this one after one?
That's the one that says miscellaneous costs.
Miscellaneous very cost and.
The salaries. Cost.
Miscellaneous.
Y'all just may not have it in this slide there, but we have it.
I want to talk about is that when it says salary cost summary. I said miscellaneous salary cost summary. And of course, code, we look at the thirty-four student transportation. Salary is definitely paying the listeners. And so much of fuel.
The two that has, the total on the bottom is under, actual is three point seven twelve. Right? And you go up to thirty-four, and you got one eighty-nine, and actual is forty-nine. And there's a hundred and forty thousand dollar difference.
And that, what that is, is overtime. So in, in our analysis, we discovered that for the past couple of years, they weren't budgeting accurately. So we extended it a little bit more there to cover, make sure we cover all the costs that we can.
So this is overtime to your bus drivers?
Yes. And that's the major area in our overtime. You'll see that, that analysis after this, this session. Okay, our next section, section is our campus allotment. So as you can see, we had a, we had a few analysis of this. And what we currently see, and we're still pending some numbers from our transfers. But what we see right now is our numbers almost remain stagnant. There's minimal change from, from last year. You can see our number reflects that there. Are you part of the allotment?
What is the, again, just checking for understanding here for myself. The, this is, this column at the far right is twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen memo budget totals. It's not actual, it's not year-to-date actuals like the other pages, right?
Right. And really, for, for our campus allotment, excited to show you the direction that we went last year compared to this year, because they pretty much spent everything. And we can give you that detail as well.
Okay, that's fine, I was just curious. And then this is determined how? Is that based on the ADA for students? So for example, if I'm looking at Salinas, they went from seventy thousand last year to, I mean, this year was fifty-four thousand, next year seventy thousand. So we anticipate they'll have more students, is that right? Am I making it right?
And actually, as Emily intentionally rezoned, it'll go to the north side to come to the south side.
Okay, so that's where we're seeing this reflected here, got it? Okay, cool. Keeping up here.
Okay, our department allotment. We categorized these into five categories for you. Our academic and program departments, extracurricular departments, support departments, and auxiliary departments, and other district members. In, in your packet, under department allocations, if you were to flip to our business office, we actually have a detail in there for you that gives you how we, how we go ahead and budget for, for need. So that's location fifteen, in the department allocation section. So we set budget reserves for, for areas of the, our general operating budget reserve. This is pretty much for those miscellaneous items that come out, come up during the year. We typically spend around this much. Athletics, we want to make sure to set aside some money for them as they're now traveling a little farther. Okay, so we set two hundred and seventy-five thousand aside for them. And also recover a little bit of the insurance costs for them. Our fine arts, this is a marching year. And of course, they have a little bit more travel, so we set aside thirty-five thousand for them.
Is that enough?
I mean, yeah, but I mean, the thing is this, you have, you have the band and the football team traveling to the same games, I mean, same towns.
The sports program, the volume of the sports program is a lot larger than it is for fine arts.
Two little schools thing to high school and both in particular. For the girls' dance.
Okay, our teams department. This is money that we set aside for cloud support for our financial management system teams. So we need to pay this on a yearly basis. And this is something that is truly necessary because in the event that, that our system goes down, we know that everything's backed up, and we're going to get the support we need from them. Okay? It's also the cloud service portion, so we can access our, we can access our, our system online. Our auxiliary departments, we put aside a hundred and seventy-six thousand for them. And mostly, this is going to be due to some HVAC and some small projects that they have planned for the year. The concluding here is a look at our budget summary. As we mentioned, our revenue came in at a hundred and sixty-four point seven. Expenditures, for personnel, a hundred and eleven point five. Miscellaneous salaries. Miscellaneous salaries, four million. Our campus allocations, three point one million. Department allocations, four point six. And we're protecting a balanced budget as high for you guys.
I think I need to go back to just a couple of questions on the academic and program department allocation summary. Okay, so I'm on page, I'm on page two, but you have to go to department allocations. You see department allocations, and then go to page two. So on here, so there's a big decrease here between the sixteen-seventeen year and seventeen-eighteen for language arts, math, and science. Were we anticipating we're like letting go of or not doing, or?
So we've done a lot of work with our federal programs department, and we transitioned a lot of costs that we would normally pick up in our general operating fund over to them. We kind of swapped them, and we met numerous times with our academic departments in order to make sure that it's going to be used for next year. So this is the end result of all that, that's one of the areas I'm really concerned about.
This is where you're, 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 I guess, making your PCN numbers? And is that what your, the PCN numbers, that when you're paying them out of certain different accounts for?
No, I don't think this is a payroll.
No, this item was more of softwares, supplemental items that we commonly pay under, under the general operating fund.
Yeah, no, because this is a real, is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and projecting forty-eight thousand. So it's just, I mean, it's a difference, but it's not, it's not in the millions of those categories, no. I was just curious. So if you all, if y'all were to summarize, I mean, because where we were when we had the first budget meeting, we were like projecting expenditures of like six million over or something like that. Can you all just summarize where you found some of the cost savings?
The highlights? So through attrition, we worked with our HR department, and we cut about eight hundred and fifty thousand, more or less, over the year. We also looked at items that were inflating our budget on the personnel side. We actually found that in the past, they budgeted for positions that were pretty much just vacancies in order just to, just to meet needs and need better emergencies. So now, you know, we communicate almost daily, and if there's a new PCN out there, ask them to just vacation for it.
Good.
So that was the major area, like I mentioned. We also had supplemental items that went over to our federal funds, going to help us out.
So we, what you're basically saying, you, for attrition, we may have saved eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year, and just, since we pretty much started tightening the belt.
That's us.
Yeah, I've never received a penny.
That's for our travel and stuff.
A hundred and seventy-four thousand?
When we get, yeah, it'd be good to see year-to-date actuals on these that don't. Because on these other categories, you all have the year-to-date actuals, I feel like, hold on. Yeah, for personnel costs, you have year-to-date actuals, but then everything else is just the budget totals. It'll be just good to get that, but I know we're in the middle of closing up the year.
Definitely provide those to you guys. In closing, I'd like to say that although we've done a lot of work, there, there is always a chance that we may need things. And the reason why we always set a little bit extra into our budget is just for that reason. One of the items that is not on here, and was a conversation we had in part of meeting, is the A P Solis roofing project, which just was approved. So that item is not on here, and we'll bring it to you with you guys. We're still trying to work to see if we can cut in other places and reallocate funding in order to meet our goal of covering that as well. But that is one of the items that is not, not in here.
It's not budgeted for next year yet, it's not in here.
Right.
I thought, what was it that was being done at A P Solis that we paid for?
Well, there is a roofing, we already approved two payments, payment one, payment number two. I don't know exactly what the possible remaining balance is, and that's what you referred to, right? They're going to be on the September.
So you need to budget for this, the remaining balance to be budgeted in for this coming year?
Correct, and today, they have not finished the project. If they don't finish by August thirty-first, then it will.
Does it roll over to the following?
Yes.
Is it, I think you already paid?
Yes.
If that's about fifty percent of the, I don't know what, right?
I think we paid about a week, a person pay half, that, so we haven't finished doing it. There's, there's still.
Do you know, do you know what the total is?
Probably about two hundred thousand, three hundred fifty-three was the total. Yeah, but I understand that they won't be finished till after September, so we have to make plans to budget for it.
And they were supposed to have finished that job by the fifteenth, right?
Before school starts? Substantial completion.
Substantial completion was scheduled for September the ninth.
September ninth?
Yeah, but according to them, they should be finishing by September fourth.
September fourth, correct.
Why did we do on that date? Because, you know, knowing that the school year starts in August, I mean, it would have made sense to try to push it to get the job done before school starts. You know, I know that, I've seen bids where people go off a bid and say, okay, we want this job finished by, I mean, by August tenth, and we're going to deduct like two thousand dollars per day, for every day that goes over budget, you know, over. Do we ever do stuff like that?
Yes.
Every day it comes in.
We have done it at the best.
But this, this roofing deal been to the cost?
I'm not certain.
So we're starting about twenty-one days, but I don't know the specific details of the twenty-one. Okay, at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Abraham Diago, who will talk about the house that he did for our overtime.
Okay, one more question. I want to make sure I'm matching up these numbers right. So I'm looking at this, the revenue sources total, so, right? And so we're projecting a hundred and sixty-four point four million in revenues, right? And that includes the federal, state, and local? Is that right? Okay. So then, then when I go to this one, the summary, no. It's this one. Sorry, it's a lot of numbers, and I just want to make, kind of make sure. So we're projecting a hundred and sixty-four point four million. Our year-to-date actual is a hundred and sixty-eight point eight million. And then our, um, but then our, our projection for our budget furniture is a hundred and sixty-four point four, point six million. Is that my, because then that means that if we compare our year-to-date totals, what we're estimating for expenditures in our budget is about four million dollars less than what we spent this year. Okay.
So are we, is that what our, at the end of the day, that's going to be what you guys are going to come back to us and say, okay, we have to do a budget amendment for point one, four point two million dollars out of our balance?
Or do we ask for a curve, or are you going to ask for a rate, or are you going to ask for something to make?
So, yes, so because the thing is, is ideally, we shouldn't have budget amendments month over month. I mean, ideally, we would have a budget, it would be approved, everyone has their budgets for the year, and they spend within those budget, budgeting categories.
Okay, looking at this budget, one of the, one of the concerns that I had with Todd, and I don't, I don't know that we have anything in here at all to address the issues that Todd, do we have anything planned for that, or what's, what's, what's on the?
The only thing we were discussing had been the additional restrooms, correct? And then the covered cabin, covered.
Where, is that out of the building fund? Where's the building?
Did we estimate about a hundred and thirteen thousand?
Is that, where would that, where would the building fund, is that where something like that would come out of?
That, that would come out of our general operating fund. We've set aside a little reserve for some of those projects. And we're still working to make up for it.
Is it going to be the Todd ballot, Todd budget?
We usually put it under auxiliary reserves.
There's nothing there, in there.
Yes, capital items, so it would be divided under the capital expense item. It wouldn't be allocated directly to the campus.
Okay, hold on, let me, do you know where that is, saying so, are you looking at it?
No, I'm just, I'm just bringing it up because it's one of the things that I had brought up a couple of months back.
How much is currently budgeted for capital? What, what, under what category is that?
So going back to this office breakdown that we showed you guys? We got some that are reserved, and now we're still working to see if we can, you know, get some more funding in order to, of the program department, and do some more, you know, efficient to get to our goal of.
So can you just point me to where it should be showing up in the, in the budget summaries? In what, in what section?
Fifteen O D D department, which is in fifteen.
Business office breakdown, this is what they referred to earlier, about the athletic and the fine arts.
We also need direction as to what projects you would like for us to budget for, because that's something that we really haven't touched on. But we did set aside some reserve money from those HVACs that break down, and so we wanted to have money set aside for that.
And where to give you direction prior to August thirty-first, prior to the last?
Well, we haven't heard anything recent, I don't know if there's any like major projects that they want to work on and we can budget for.
We don't know what projects we have to work on.
Well, and the only process, again, we've been very, very clear that, you know, one of the things that I wanted to do, and I'm sure we're going to do it right now, but in the future, probably here, is look at getting a four-lane asphalt track, true four-hundred meter for every elementary, a four-lane. And, you know, we looked at the expenditures, that kind of projected amount would have been somewhere under ninety to ninety-five thousand. So we're not putting any of that right now, but we have a dialogue going.
Yes, and we did get quotes for all that, that from what the ones that we've before is like, oh, who sets the project to the board, and then if it's something, you know, it has to be board approved, and we don't already budget for it.
And I know that we had a plan, we would replace like all our HVAC that are fifteen years and older, and we currently have some. We weren't able to replace them this past year, but we do need to replace them. And I, I know that Mr. Osadas, they talked to the business office to replace, what was it, two campuses? But I believe there might be more, because it's conservative, because it is very, very costly. Because it's like the entire campus.
So why weren't those included under the energy program? When we went through that, they, six, seven million dollars?
They didn't, part of the years.
Because they want fifteen years, at that point, they want fifteen years old.
Because that was, that was the cool schools grant, right?
Well, that was the one, the E three. We had the cool schools, and then we had the E three. So when we went through that, through that survey or analysis, some of our HVAC were fourteen years old, so they didn't meet the fifteen-year threshold. But that was like two, three years ago, so now they're ready for fifteen, fifteen.
Then, I mean, I went to go over to the, to the warehouse, Vegas warehouse, and they had pretty new-looking AC units there, that were just sitting there, and I said, what are those doing there? And they said, well, we removed those under the E grant, or the E base. That is right. And they were brand new, and they looked like they had just been replaced, but they were.
Yeah, some of them, some of them were, were taken out because they wanted all the same, the same type or same brand in the campus, so they were taken down, they were good. Those we have in the warehouse, some.
But what about fifteen-year, fifteen-year, are they coming to play there, or what?
No, now I'm not sure, my understanding is because when they came in, in order to have an effective savings true, they need to have everything exactly what their, referred to veterans. That would then the entire campus.
So any HVAC or not, that's kind of breaking down or whatever, and we have one that'll reuse that. The ones that were taken out, that you said were brand new, we're currently using those.
See, what they did was they had to match up all the units to the controls. They put in the control, and so when they had to do that, some of the units were a little bit newer, but they had to come out and know that in order to have the same, the same system working in there.
There was only veterans, and I was thinking that. And now we have, it's breaking down, and we're going to start, try to use some of the equipment that we have sitting in the warehouse.
So these Todd renovations have to come out of the general operating fund? That's where the?
We have, under the business and finance, from the fifteen, we have, yes, we have some.
So like, so we have in the general operating, nine hundred and forty-three thousand?
I know that some of those, I'm going through some of the portable buildings that we have out there. There's some of the roofs are like a really sad shade. I've noticed that over here at Central Office, you guys have gone around and replaced all the siding with metal, and metal roofs, and.
Yeah, so that's part of, that's why we have it in place. We're eventually going to encase every portable, but we're going as.
I feel like, I remember the workshop that we had, looked at different options about what to do. I think it was the same time as the workshop we did the bond, because we were looking at improvement to Todd or something like that. I don't remember what those numbers were, but.
So every auxiliary department has a five-year plan, and so, you know, every year, we do a little bit more. Like in transportation, every year, purchase, you know, five vessels. So, so, because everything is very costly with our auxiliary department, so we kind of have to go with year by year.
And we don't have any, any plan of action on, I mean, like I said, you know, that Todd campus, I mean, those kids there are, you know, every day, they're going to school, and, you know, they're, you know, the environment is there, it's not very conducive to money, you know? I mean, why couldn't we, have money from some of the other places, and, you know?
Which places, Mr. Gettle?
Keep in mind, second, when we discussed this, we, I do recall two things that we had kind of come to consensus with regard to Todd, and that was the covered walkways that we looked at, and an additional restroom. And then the thing we have here, because at one time, we were discussing adding a new wing, etc., but we backed off of that because, you know.
The money's not fair.
Right, and furthermore, the other thing is, we are shifting about two hundred kilo that are going to go down to A P Solis, so that number is going to do a little bit right now.
And maybe eliminate some of those orders.
We're looking at that, I mean, obviously, that's the first place we want to do.
How do we make sure that that money, just any status is point question here? How do we make sure that that money gets, where would it go once it, we said, yes, we want to put this amount?
Yeah, that's the term I was looking for. I'd like to see something here more, like for Todd, even if it doesn't get done this year, you know, I want some money set aside.
Yes.
A half a million, no, I know, you know, four hundred thousand, then another, another million next year, and then one point four million, we can build a wing for about third next year. You know, and that's, that's what I like to see, because in years past, we haven't done anything. You know, I always get pretty irate because, you know, we don't have a central panel. So please look at that, and that should be like, one of the top. So please look at that, and that should be like, one of the top priorities, I think, I think, you know. I'd like to put something aside and say, look, here, this is what we got, and, uh, if something comes up and we have to use it earlier, well, we have to. But, uh, you know, that, we, in your market, and maybe, you know, put a little nice, nice little wing out there instead of those portals, and dress it up to make it look.
So am I, so am I understanding correctly that, uh, so we're gonna save money to create a wing, so at this point, we don't go forward at all with putting canopies and walkways and restaurants?
Were the canopies and restrooms and all that gonna be, in the portals?
The canopies were gonna be the portals, right, because they were saying kids were getting wet, and they were going from.
The walkways.
Right, and in, in the pickup areas.
What, did, did we budget for money this year to, for W A Todd improvements?
Then?
Hasn't happened yet, Mark, but that's part of what the, this.
Yeah, we have money. No, no, I'm sorry, not seventeen, eighteen, but sixteen, seventeen.
Yeah.
Like, when, when were we, when, when was the plan to do the covered stuff?
Well, we were gonna do them this past year, just in here.
It was the part of, of the project.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay. So that's why we're saying, okay, we need to allocate it for this coming year, we, if we did covered walkways or whatever, it needs to have, come out of next year's budget. Yep, so I, I mean, that seems like the, you gotta do the budget thing first, but alongside that, we gotta determine what, what improvements need to be made at Todd.
I think you need to go ahead and do what you, what you originally have planned as far as the covered walkways.
And the restaurants?
And, yes.
What were you on the restaurant?
If, if we're gonna put the wing, where would the wing actually go? Probably out there where those portals are, so we might be able to just use those, those walkways and just extend them a little bit more.
The, uh, the wing would probably be attached to the building, so the walkway would be from maybe to the, that building, to like the gym, to the end building, maybe to the walk, uh, the, the pickup area, it was still coming in.
We're, we're basically doing covered, covered areas.
Go ahead, go ahead and do that, you know, for sure.
Where's the?
The restaurant, it's gonna be in that, in that, uh, open area in front of the end building?
So let me make sure, do you want us to do it from the money that we have set aside in our budget? With, uh, our budget reserve that we've set aside, or is that a fund balance item?
I would recommend the fund balance, so everybody knows ahead of time what it is that we've got. And everyone knowing exactly where we're gonna go, because when we do it beforehand, that's when you truly can designate, nevermind, that's really the word.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're saying clearly, there should be money budgeted for W A Todd building renovations in next year's budget.
Okay, now?
I don't know what, how, the process for determining how that money should be used, maybe it's used to do the thing that we already planned for this past year, but.
Okay, fund balance, what is it that we have in there, what is it that we need to have in?
We have to have, uh, three months of operating. We have, right now, we have about, um, over three months in there, we have hundred and forty-six, hundred and forty-six million. Um, we still haven't finished the year, but it'll probably be a little bit more, because we've been so conservative in our spending.
Okay, it's probably just forty-six, right?
I mean, forty-six million.
Forty-six million.
Maybe it's happy that first I was hoping on a different world.
Forty-six million.
Okay, so is, is there some way that we can allocate, what we can allocate out of the fund balance, and still stay within, and allocate it toward Todd?
Yes, yes.
And, and speaking to, uh, our monitor, this is, this, these are the things that we could do ahead of time, and to your budget, designate it.
Yes, with a plan.
So, so if it's a, if it's a million, then you have a million to work with. If it's, you know, one point two, then you have one point two to work with, uh, we can do something with it, you know, we can do something constructive with it.
What about the H U C L E story maker of the roof?
Because that's gonna go into the September one, and I certainly, I would recommend that we also look at that as well, too, so that everybody's got the cards on the table, and, and none of this that we want. Because that operating budget that they're referred to there is, is the, and the general operating, that is, nine forty-two is for things that may be unforeseen, if this is not unforeseen, we're talking about what we want, what kind of gets there. And if we take it from there, then the machine is what's back, what helps us, and then that's what we need to know.
Can we, can we use, can we use about the, our annual budget of a hundred sixty-four million dollars? The monthly would be thirteen point six, six, six?
For a month?
About a fourteen.
Forty-one? We need to have, well, forty-one million dollars.
I did it at fourteen, and that's being matured, it's only four, two, seven, yeah.
So there's, there's a little, we have a little cushion in that fund balance. But we're gonna try to do a budget amendment of four million dollars here.
Oh, no.
No.
No, no, no.
It's gonna be part of your budget.
Yeah, it's, we're gonna.
This is why now is the time we're talking about there, where.
So what I'm saying is for, for this year, I mean, you still have to end this year. And in order to end this year, are we gonna be even, or are we gonna have to go grab a little bit of money out of there?
Um, we really, uh, worked really, really rigorously, uh, day and night, almost weekend, uh, coming through the, the, gosh, the general ledger, and we're clearing up accounts. So, up to now, it looks like, it's, we are balanced, you know, we're balanced, we're, right now, we're looking on the team, yeah.
So the five million dollars that you guys had asked us for in February, March? Who was that, that you guys came over and they said, well, we need to do a budget amendment of five point something million dollars?
I think it was in March, that was, uh, before we.
So between March and now, you guys have been able to, to tighten the belt?
Yeah, they were, they were capital items, and I believe there was some, um, some, um, T C S that were open, and I think insurance issues that we had, that's all that to.
Yeah, because our year-to-date actuals are a hundred and sixty-eight point eight million. And our estimated revenues are, what, for this year? What is our?
Estimated revenues are one hundred and sixty-one.
So we're close, we're close there. I, this, but this is through what, um, the year-to-date actuals, this is through August?
No, this is through June, this is July and August, uh, uh.
Oh.
We're still missing July and August, it's supposed, um, and then, uh, in September, we'll get some more foundation than for August, but we won't be able to September.
Oh, so this is just through end of June?
Yeah.
So it's gonna be tight?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so I guess you. Tell me that the expenditure goes through July.
Yeah.
Uh, did we push them out through July?
Oh, the year-to-date are through the end of July?
Yeah, so you have a hundred and sixty-one million as compared to a hundred and fifty-eight million of revenue.
So I guess just to clarify, the, the upgrade in Todd and the Solis roof, they will get it out of the fund balance?
That's fund balance, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna.
It has to be designated.
Fund balance, right.
Right, if, if, uh, if it's, if we budget it for next year, uh, we're, we're looking at making sure that we have a three-month fund balance, and then a little, little bit of a cushion there, and then, I guess the rest, they can use it for, for doing something for that Todd building. And I guess release.
Okay, once we designate it, it's going to end up on, on page nine, uh, function eighty-one. The facilities are under the official budget. The facilities, facilities acquisition and construction.
Okay, summary underneath.
Page nine, under the official budget. Function eighty-one.
Page nine?
Yes, and, um, there's function eighty-one, and that's where we record.
Oh, yes, this is what I was looking for.
That's the last page.
So we'd see that, what, two point six million go up?
Well, that was, that was this year.
That was this year, so zero, I did it right now for next year, but that's what we're going to put.
Oh.
Um, yes, maybe two, where are the, where are the, I'm trying to have three.
Uh-huh. Okay, that, that's a difference there, because we, year-to-date, two point six million, we didn't have anything budgeted here. So these totals, the estimated budget expenditures, this one hundred and sixty-four million, that doesn't include anything with facilities acquisition. Oh, okay.
Okay, we were working within the actual budget, not tapping into the fund balance.
Mm-hmm, I see, yes, that's moving us.
So we were, we had a zero.
Yeah, there was nothing.
We'll be happy to answer, people can come by the office, call us, and, um, and we'll, we'll be there to answer any questions, yes. We might have to use a, a book.
What was next? Mr.?
Mr. Abraham Vayal, he's gonna go over the overtime.
Overtime, overtime. How are we doing? Um, I've got a full minute to myself to you guys, um, Abraham Vayals, on the budget comment, and I'm gonna be presenting to you guys the overtime, the stupid shit. So overtime reporting, um, overtime is tracked on a monthly basis for all of the auxiliary departments. So what we do here is we categorize all of our auxiliary departments and how much they spend on a monthly basis. So if you're wondering what the cap, uh, what we categorize as an auxiliary department, uh, that includes our transportation, which is our, our function thirty-four, food services, function thirty-five, uh, custodial, function fifty-one, the clinical A and C U, um, maintenance operations, uh, function fifty-one, warehouse, uh, once again, fifty-one, uh, ORD nine ninety-seven, uh, security monitoring, it's fifty-two, and then last but not least, uh, technology, which is function thirty-three. And if you look at the little graph it's giving you, um, what we do on a monthly basis for the overtime report, um, it gives you the department, and then it gives you a breakdown per month, uh, seeing how much that particular department has spent. And then at the bottom, you can see the totals for that particular month.
Why is January so much lower for transportation?
Because you only work, uh, a couple of weeks, um, and come back in the, uh.
Six, seven, seven, we're just, we're just.
Oh.
General operating.
That makes that big a difference, wow.
Yes, and even though we, we know December, that we only work two weeks, I believe that the reason why December's a little bit higher is because, uh, they have a lot of field trips in November. So even though we only work two weeks, the overtime will be high in there. We also do a little bit of trend analysis with the overtime, uh, what we do here is we calculate it for the past three years, and we analyze, uh, each department, uh, by month, and then by year. The monthly analysis is done in order to find out whether the expenditures have increased or decreased, uh, for that particular department and for that particular month. So if you look at the graph, I'm giving you an example of two thousand fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, and then sixteen, seventeen. I'm giving you the department, and then how much, uh, they spent in this particular month. This is the, the latest report that we provided to the campaign meeting, uh, this is for the month of July. And then at the end of the graph, you're able to see the difference between two thousand sixteen and seventeen versus fifteen and sixteen, the breakdown. Uh, inventory transportation went down ninety-two percent, uh, food services didn't have the overtime, custodial went up fifty percent, uh, maintenance operations went down forty-five percent, and so forth. Again, you see the total for the month, uh, we read this over in July, thirty-two percent compared to last year.
But if, if I'm, I'm looking at this, collecting only, are, are fifteen, all of it, and maybe, this, these figures actually margin for measure.
Oh, this is just to do like a little breakdown on how we calculate the overtime, this is just, uh, we had to chop off to give you a little chart, but we do all the year, we consider that the, the whole year.
Snapshot of July.
Yeah.
So are you comparing all the January, 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 for, or?
Yes, so if we go to the second page, the second slide, this is comparing July, two thousand fourteen, two fifteen, and then fifteen, sixteen, and then sixteen, seventeen. That's the comparison, so how much we spent in July, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, we spent eight thousand six hundred and thirty-one. In fifteen, sixteen, we spent two thousand dollars nine eleven, and then sixteen, seventeen, we spent, uh, a thousand nine eighty point fifteen. So then we scroll, we remind, at the bottom of page eight, for the month of July, it says it's up to increase thirty-two percent compared to last year's, uh, July.
Every department is, is, uh, on?
Yes, every year, to the requirement.
Every one day?
To the requirement.
The auxiliary, Mr. Moon, and those are basically the ones that are hourly, so automatically, these, these individuals do not qualify for the comp time that sometimes you may hear out there, these individuals, the minutes go forty hours over, that one hour will be time and a half. Then, then we'll always get the monetary compensation, and this is why it's really critical that we monitor that here.
Yeah.
And sometimes when it's gotta be, the, the wireline breaks, you know, Saturday morning, obviously, that's, that's a big deal.
So we gave the, like, the food services, uh, the, the, we gave the employees an additional hour, and on top of that additional hour, they still amassed overtime.
We're gonna discuss the, the food services example, uh, later on the presentation, asking why it's possible to affect that additional hour of the overtime, the cost of the overtime. So overtime department, each department is analyzed individually to review their expenditures by year. So what we do in the overtime report, we provide a little graph, uh, for our employees, for our directors, so they can see a little trend for the past three years, for coming here and in the last two years. So you see that the blue line represents two thousand fifteen, the green line is two thousand sixteen, and then the orange line is two thousand seventeen. You're able to see a little trend between those three years. For the most part, we've been able to stay within in betweens, uh, fourteen, fifteen, and then, uh, sixteen, seventeen. So the orange line has always been in between those two years, meaning that, uh, overtime has been stable, particularly for overtime, uh, for transportation. Now, this is the example that we were, uh, talking about right now, about the nutrition, uh, changing the employee's schedule. Changing the employee's schedule has an impact on the cost of overtime. Uh, food service, for example, employees change from seven to eight hours working days, consequently, the overtime spike has increased since then. So if you look at the chart, the, the increase from seven hours to eight hours, the overtime went, uh, from four hundred and something to, all the way to seven thousand. So we see the huge spike in the chart. And then after that, you're gonna see that even the orange line is still above in either the other two years.
That one-hour difference made that much?
It made a difference.
Yeah, they had.
Because you should, just, just in January, when we approved it, right?
Yes.
It's that one month.
Yes, well, actually, if you look at the orange line, which is the, the, the orange lines, uh, because the tall is line, that's where we have mostly overtime busy for competition. So all this year, after you guys approved that additional hour, you're able to see that the overtime has been increasing for that particular department.
Can you explain why?
Because you gave an additional hour?
Because they worked seven hours before, so if they worked an hour later, it was just rather eight, then you think over the forty hours in a week, it's overtime.
So why would they have any overtime at all? They should get it done within the eight, eight hours, you know?
I mean, that the manager, managers were not monitoring the hours.
The only thing that I can think of is, you clock in ten minutes before, you clock in ten minutes later, and it all adds up.
See, what happened in the past, you see, is that they work, say, seven hours, thirty-five hours, they always work, they never work the thirty-five hours. Most of them, they usually work. Most of them, they usually worked thirty-seven, thirty-eight, so now, we got them at, say, so they're forty, so now they're at forty-two, forty-three, or even more.
So they're still, they're still.
And what means, I'm getting saying, happens a lot. Yeah, that's, that's what happened.
So that's where management should have said, hey, guys, you know, it's, uh, time to go, almost, let's go.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I'll just give you, for instance, you know, when, when, uh, Mister, uh, Castillo came down on the, on the comp time, you know, we, we've been cracking it, and it's almost not existent anymore.
But, uh, that's the purpose of the reports, is just to provide information to the directors so they, they know, um, and what's, what, what's addressed, cause behind every report is all this information.
Right.
So, but this, this isn't this one month, like, this is just per month, so December, a thousand five hundred.
So you, this graph represents every single month, uh, for the past three years, it goes from September all the way to August. Um, after the increase of the hour, you're able to see that the food services department went from spending probably four hundred, five hundred thousand overtime to seven thousand, and now consequently, each month, they're spending over a thousand dollars in overtime. Whereas before, they were only spending two hundred dollars, two hundred, now they're spending over a thousand dollars.
But it's, um, I'm just thinking proportionally, like, we're talking about a thousand dollars versus like, a budget of a hundred and sixty-four point five million, you know what I mean? I'm just, it's gone out, but it's not like.
It's not breaking the bank?
No.
Right, and, and at the end of the day, trust is exactly right, with the thirty-five hours, you have a little, little buffer, for lack of a better word. So thirty-seven, thirty-eight, never came up, because you will never get compensated overtime until you hit that forty plus mark. And, and again, I concur, we, we just need to come back and say, uh, we need to stay within the forty, and if you can't do it, then go home and we'll work on it the next day, but.
So can, can we give the overtime? What, can we give the overtime?
Oh.
Are you exempt or unexempt employee? Not possible, we're an exempt employee.
Eight dollars a dollar, maybe, but yeah.
That's funny.
Legally, you cannot.
We also did a cost analysis, um, as you can see, overtime has increased over the last two years. Um, this report is as of July, considering we finished, uh, August, right? So as of July, overtime has increased five percent from this year to last year. And overall, from two thousand fourteen, fifteen to sixteen, seventeen, we have increased, uh, a total of twenty-seven percent. If we were to put it in a number figure here, we've increased a hundred and eighty-four thousand eight fifty-eight point seventy-one dollars as of July. So the total right now in July, uh, for the overtime in this year is six hundred and fifty-two thousand nine sixty-five. Uh, what we spent last year, and the number that you see in this one for last year is six hundred and twenty-five seven oh nine. What we spent in fourteen, fifteen is four, uh, four seventy-eight, four forty. So steadily over the years, we've been increasing our overtime expenditures. So over the last two years, we've increased at least twenty-seven percent.
Who overall sees this, um, this sort of trend like this, you know, when we're building up these, this type of, uh, expenditures on?
Mister Billen, a couple of years back, we used to have an overtime report, and they would come and give an overtime report to the, to the board, and at that point, whenever somebody was aligned with the, with the overtime report, the board members usually had, had management for, for not keeping an eye on their overtime, and the overtime, uh, really went down in fourteen and fifteen. So that might be something that we might consider, you know, for, for this year.
Absolutely.
You get an overtime report, and then you got the same guys going on the overtime, uh, it becomes kind of embarrassing for the director to have to come up here and answer your question all the time. When, I think you'll see a big difference there.
Let's do it, sir, go on, let's do it.
I think we should do it in a way that doesn't embarrass people, though. But yes, hold them accountable, I got you.
Bottom line is hold the accountability here.
Um, I think the other thing is, I'm wondering, as staffing, it, are these departments, the, are these some of the departments that have, like, decreased staffing over the course of the year, cause that's the only thing I'm thinking that would also impact what ha, is happening here is.
I will tell you that in transportation, it is an issue, cause we're short tran, we're, we're short drivers. And second of all, not everybody wants to do, uh, trips, so you basically have the same people that are having to go out.
During overtime, that's what I, I thought, yeah, so, cause I was thinking, the other thing that impacts this is if there's fewer staff, the staff that are working might have to work more or something, it's like a trade-off.
You know, Mrs. Rahel, you said that, and I've heard that before, but me at this end, I've heard from many bus drivers that say, we, we're never allowed to do the field trip, to do the extra time work, it's always the same group, and I've heard this more than once. So I, I'm not discrediting what you're saying, but I also hear the opposite end of the employees, which are those bus drivers that want those extra hours, they never can get them. It's uncertainty that always.
Everybody has an opportunity, there's a rotation basis.
I beg to differ, and I really would like to look into that, because that's not what I'm hearing. I mean, you're, you're an administrator, you're hearing that on this end, I'm a trustee, where I have the people texting and calling me, saying, look, we've asked, we've applied, and we're not given it, and, and, and I'm, you know, I'm not here to argue with you, I'm just saying, I beg to differ on that, and I'd like to really look into it.
Cause they try to put a system where, you know, it's like, I mean, like what Mr. Billen was saying, I've, I've also heard that too.
We do have a system, of course.
And, and the thing is this, is, you know, hey, if we have, I mean, the list of bus drivers, and you bring them in one at a time, and say, hey, uh, Velma, do you wanna work overtime? Uh, no, I wanna go home, right? And then you ask the rest of the, uh, I mean, uh, you wanna work, uh, overtime? Yeah, yeah, so then you start getting a list of people, you get that list of people who are ready to work, and you put it on some type of, uh, uh, program, where you're able to say, okay, you know, uh, hey, the last one that had the program, I mean, uh, um, uh, trip was Vianera, and then it was Castillo, and then it was Reyna, and then it was Velma, but Velma didn't wanna go, so then they come back to Guerrero, Guerrero didn't wanna go, and then they went, I mean, can we have something?
And we do have, we do have that in place, Mr. Guerrero.
Sure.
We have a listing of, of all the drivers that, that wanna, that wanted to field trips.
Okay.
And they're kinda listed, so as the field trips are coming in, okay, who's next in line? Okay, so this field trip's coming in, if I'm next in line, okay, that's his field trip. Next one coming in, I'm next in line, I, I take it. Next field trip, you're in line, but you're saying, you know what, I, you know, I don't wanna take that field trip. Okay, so then it gets given to the next person.
So we do have some of that.
Yes, yes, that should.
So why do we get the full?
Okay, now, here's the thing, Mr. Billen, Mr. Guerrero, I, I, I believe as well, they're doing, they're coming to you all, but, you know, we talk about transparency. I'm really, really, uh, willing to bring this, this report to you all. In fact, back when I was overseeing that, I used to do that report myself, and I would run it by name, and it was green, you still had, you still had room. Red, you were done, you had already exceeded, and then I would look at the full-timers and the part-timers, um, like anything else, you know, you know, we, we understand.
So you were developed long?
Right, I would have enough, but however, though, when the individuals would say, I didn't get overtime, then, uh, I would go back and, and rate them that said, no. You, you said no because you wanted the, the one to the radio, but you got the one in PSJA, so you said no. They failed to tell us that, so what I started doing, and I asked them, and I'm sure we still have that in place, when the next person's next, uh, or Eleonora, you were gonna go to PSJA, that's the one that would be next? If they say no, they have them signed, and then we document it. Because again, we also need to be understanding that you can't just pick and choose, you know, uh, and that's just the way it works, and that's how you have. And so it was really clear, because I would show them, all the green, you still had room, cause you might have had like maybe four, five hours of overtime, the red, you were way above there, the twenties.
So you cut those guys off and?
Right, and, and, you know, again, I even had it posted up there with their PCN number, okay, so we need to reactivate it, we're not doing that again, but.
We'll, we'll revisit that.
No, that's something, I mean, you know, just to be fair to everybody, because, uh, they say, no, the, tienes sus favoritos. You know, that's, that's one of the famous terms that we as, as trustees are getting, you know, and, uh, you know, it's like Mr. Castillo says, there's always two sides at every start. You know, but when we have documentation, that's the, the, like Mr. Ferris says, you have your side, my side, and then you have the truth. You know, so once you, once you have the truth, you can't deny it, you know, so that's what we wanna be, we wanna be able to say, look, it's a black and white.
Right, and then we're also gonna have those individuals who very clearly make it note that I do not want any extras. I just wanna pick up my kids in the morning, drive home in the afternoon, cause I do other things at home. So no good, but even though we, we could use them, but they say no, I don't. We have the pre-K in the morning, that picks up in the AM, in the afternoon, then we have the, the tours in the end, the trips. Uh, I'm curious, I know you've got this report, Mr. Rahel, but in this one, you've got all departments. It'd be really good to see the same report, but now by the CMTB, and by the transportation, and so forth.
Yeah.
And I don't know if I have it, but just so the trustees could see that as well, too. Uh, another factor that I think it's important for us, because it obviously is a workshop, and we discuss these things, on the six, sixteen, seventeen, I can almost tell you that the largest number, which I don't know which one it's here, but it'll be the four fourteen, is probably gonna be the transportation, because our district, we're zones over there. In February, we're gonna go up for realignment, UAL realignment, and we'll find out where we end up again. Again, I always said, I would love to be in the, in the, uh, thirty, thirty-one, five eight, because you've got thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two, I wanna be the thirty-one, five eight, so that we're here, around the PSJA's, and Edinburgh's, and us, but unfortunately, we ended up in thirty-two, which is all around the school, and that is where you have the male, female.
Oh, is that done by a top school?
That's UAL State of Texas, UAL U, and, you know, uh, that school, like, we're in City, something like that, go radio and, uh, and they come over here, comes PSJA, but that, we have this year seventeen, eighteen to finish that season, and, and they will see what we.
And I think this is really good, that we have the ability to, to see it, and like Mr. Castillo said, if we can get it broken down by departments, you're, you're able to analyze it a little bit better, and then, I mean, that gives us, uh.
We actually know by department, and then what we provide to the deputy is, uh, the particular month that we're supporting by, by, by department, and then we give the, the last three years. The period of C N is, uh, slightly.
Does the police department bring up any overtime?
Uh, security month is very little.
Oh, that's under security monitoring?
We provide something like this, with the, with the graphs, um, they use, fourteen, fifteen, fifteen sixteen, and then sixteen seventeen, and then we attach kind of graphs next to it, so you're able to see the breakdown for, um, the particular month we're, uh, presenting, as well as the whole year, and then we go by the front.
I think, you see, just asking about PD, we have police officers sitting here, so they're not getting paid overtime? Cause they wouldn't work all day, so how do they get paid? And they're at the football games, they're at the basketball games, how do they get paid? Through overtime.
We have the list of employees, when we download the report, the list of employees that, uh, qualify to get the overtime, uh, and that's the report to the.
Some, some of the police don't get paid a flat, uh, like, I think it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars per game, so it's still not overtime.
But they're still overtime. But they have to work over forty hours in a week, like, to be overtime.
Well, they're very defined, also.
But, yeah, every day.
So they're getting paid the over, they're getting paid, it's just not showing up as PD money, so where's it coming from?
I, I don't really know, I would.
The, the respective department that they're working for, it's athletes, athletic, it's fine arts, it's fine arts, uh, they make budgets for those as well. Now, PD this past, um, year was using quite a bit of comp, comp time, and they got to a bunch where we actually, when, uh, Sergeant Wallen, at that time, now he's chief, uh, came on board, we, we cut down, and we said the employees to, we said, oh, take care of your comp time, because, uh, you don't wanna be accumulating, otherwise it's gonna get to the quarter, and, uh, the district may be obligated to pay them the money. So we had to do that prior to the return of duty.
So that was something that, that we were discussing, and, uh, we saw that there was a, I mean, a lot, there were certain people who had accumulated a lot of overtime in, uh,
Comp time.
Comp time, and they're, uh, they're taking it, you know, a week off, I mean, a week off, a month off.
Well, I still have a question, is what are they doing here when there's no kids here? Why are they, why are they at work when there are no kids here? And the purpose of them is to protect the kids. I mean, they're here for the kids, yet there's no kids, and they've been at work this whole, the whole time. That's something that needs to be cut off, if there's no kids, then.
They wanna protect our buildings, our assets, or, you know, they don't just protect our children, they have to protect our buildings, they have to protect, uh, everything that we own.
You need every police officer?
Not every.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's the problem.
But not every.
I think that's something that's, uh, about to, that we probably need to, to look at, and, and evaluate it, and, uh, probably make some adjustments, and, I mean, that's something that we probably need to, you know, take a, take a good look at.
I, I strongly recommend that we do look into it, but again, just be very cognizant about how, I'm gonna use the word trend, because that's the safest word I can use right now. I recall when Ron elementary, Ron's never, Ron's always been there, but when the dilemma about, uh, all these immigrants and all this COVID-19 and so forth, that it was, it was made clear that we actually had to have two police officers go there, and we kinda said, otherwise, I think we're good, we don't need that. But at that time, the philosophy was, yeah, no, we need them. If you haven't traveled, military road here recently, you can't go more than half a mile, you gotta DPS, and in between that quarter mile, you may have a border patrol. Yeah, the most protected area of this, but at that time, the philosophy was, we need to place them there. So we argue, and we need to look at that as well, too, uh, always looking at, and again, me speaking, where I'm at right now, we certainly wanna be very, very objective and be clear that we wanna be very protective. Uh, we're discussing this as a workshop, someone break something up again, there's a new law that came into place right now, that anyone who is a concealed looking holder may have his or her own pistol in their vehicle in the parking lot of any school building, that was not there before. Okay, so that's something that our school had to deal with now, that wasn't there before, and that is a statute, so, um, we have to look at where we target, and where we're zooming in on, then, where the action's at now. Uh, Chief and I, Chief, how you doing? I've got a question for you in a minute.
Yeah.
We're, we're looking at anytime, wherever the vehicle is that may be in the parking lot, whether it's a student, or whether it be a parent, or employee, now employees can do it, anybody. If for some reason they have to, have to happen to have a break-in in their vehicle, uh, Chief and I have a discussion, I thought, we need to do a little checklist, the first thing we need to ask that individual, are you a holder of concealed license? If you aren't, check, did you have it in your vehicle? Check, okay, now we're gonna go in, is it there? No, it's not, APV, get it everywhere, because, uh, prior to, we didn't have to worry about that, it would be legal regardless, that would happen.
Yeah, we, we already have an action plan in case that does happen, I don't anticipate it happening, you know, but you always have to plan for the worst, and hope for the best, so, you know.
The question, the question we have, that, that we have, because it's a workshop, so we can, we can dialogue this, police officers that are here right now, they're overtime?
No, no.
They're being paid, or they're volunteering?
No, they're paid, but I reschedule them to where certain hours.
So they're staggered to where the overtime would have been.
Yeah, there's no overtime.
That's regression.
Yes, uh, we had, Chief and I had a talk this afternoon, we were talking, that, that's exactly what we were talking about, I said, what are you doing with, uh, the police officers? He said, I'm having them come in at one and work until ten for the board meetings, you know, just to make sure that there's a level of security, and then he said, I'll be there, and I'm, I'm working for, for free. He's, you know, on a salary, you know, you know. Those are things that we, we have been discussing, you know, and, uh, I know we had a, a really good, good talk this afternoon, and that, that was what our concern is about, you know, his rescheduling, now we've lost, we've lost quite a few officers, we're not as top-heavy as we were, and with the attrition, where if someone resigns and leaves, they're not being replaced, you know? So now that means that whoever is there has to, you know, share the burden of, you know, coverage of different schools, you know? So, that's something that, that is being looked at.
So the, the other concern you had on the, on the, uh, football games and stuff like that? Uh, it doesn't matter who you hire, you have to pay them that amount. I mean, we hired, uh, Donna City Police, we have to pay them the one hundred and twenty-five, so it's a flat rate, no matter where they come from, you know?
We're gonna go to the next session, which is the health insurance, and that's gonna be presented to you guys by, uh, Nidia, who's our, uh, health economist.
And what's your name, Anna?
Nidia, please.
Nidia, Nidia.
Well, I'm gonna try to go with the health insurance stuff, we don't have anybody here from, uh, safety and risk, but we'll require events to answer your questions. Uh, what we have here is a five-year analysis of what we've been budgeted in revenues and expenditures, and how much we've actually been spending. You can see that there has been a trend where our insurance costs have gone up significantly. Uh, before, the district was contributing about three hundred and thirty-five dollars per employee, now we're at five hundred and five. We anticipate that it will stay like that for next year. This year, we're gonna have a net loss of about two point four, and that's just because our insurance cost is really going up, and this could be due to claims and things like that. And this could be due to claims and things like that, of course, the higher your claims, the higher your, your premium. Well, that's what we see that's happening here.
And this is for the sixteen, seventeen?
Mm-hmm, probably, and we'll finish the sixteen, uh, seventeen, the sixteen, seventeen year. Uh, they, it's a proposed budget already for the next full year, and again, as much as we want to, to anticipate a balanced budget, you know, that, that's still unforeseen, but we'll really end up at. Uh, I wish, we did have, maybe, an anticipation to be able to answer your questions, 'cause we're in a lot more detail. But, uh, we'll go ahead and, and take them if we have any.
So you're anticipating we're gonna have this coming year two-point-four million dollar?
That's it, that, yeah.
And where, where, where did those figures come from?
Those are actual numbers, those are your, your today's actual, uh, as of August sixteen, twenty seventeen.
So over here, you say August twenty-seventeen, fifty million, and then...
Last one?
Budget was nineteen million?
Oh, was the budget for this year twenty, the one next to it? Yeah, that's what was budgeted.
You budgeted nineteen million, and we're actually at fifty?
Yes, we're at fifty.
But did you hear that earlier?
Right, and the expenses are eighteen million, three forty-seven, seven oh two. So, um, we have, we haven't posted, um, the payroll for August yet, so that's, there's an additional revenue that's coming in from that as well. Um, that's just like the revenue and expenses that are coming in. So we might be a little bit over the nineteen million.
Listen. So you're using that as historical data, and that's what you're gonna use as a basis for our next year? Now that we're converting over to whatever adjustments we've done with the cost, we should do with all the other parts and program, they, they actually need less.
Right, we're hoping it will change.
Now, this from trustees and probably search, just through, did we set up that meeting? I did ask Mr. Guerrero to set up a meeting, and we wanted to see...
We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna set up, I have not set up, but we will.
This coming week, I wanted to see Mr. Jett, who's gonna reveal, and take your risk, us, cabinet, we can, we really wanna look at where our savings are going to be.
Yeah. I wanted to add, Sandy, the nineteen million is the expected total expenditure?
The nineteen million is what we budgeted. Um, we're already at eighteen million, three forty-seven, seven oh two for expenses. So, um, we're right close to nineteen million, we have July and August, yes, so...
What's your prediction?
We're already, um, over a little, seven oh two.
Mr. Castillo, if you recall, we had that, when we had hired Mr. Rustberg, and he had predicted like a twenty-one million dollar expenditure for this year, so, uh, it's, even though it's still higher than last year, at least I'm, I'm thankful that we're not, we're near that twenty-one million. I did have a meeting today with, uh, our directors and, um, Ms. Monzalas, this mentioned that there was a high amount, a high cost on our claims. So, so Nidia, you answered on that.
Okay, now, does anybody have any questions?
So the budget for last year and this coming year, what y'all are proposing, it's, it's exactly the same?
Yes, we, uh, I think the major change, uh, from last, as far as program-wise, like we did, add a pre-K program. Um, other than that, we pretty much, everything's remained the same, no, no taxing fees. Um, our students were, were taxing above the same, we're being a little competitive on that. And so, um, we've had those several, several, uh, PCNs, as we said earlier. And so it's really, really very easy.
Any other questions for anybody?
Um, I might not, not be able to answer this, but that's okay. So in FY twenty-twelve, we were kind of, we were still under our own insurance program, the same way we are this coming year, yes, in twenty-twelve?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you see how in twenty-twelve...
It is, it's ten million versus nineteen million now.
Right, and then look at the expenditure, how much we've been, so if, that, that, uh, nonprofit fund could get smaller, 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 so then, that's when the district ends, it starts kicking in, and then you see how it's gonna diminish, diminish, and then the fact that we're self-funded, that's why it's really important, and that meeting that I'm wanting to schedule for next week is, is gonna be important, because all the players need to get together, so they're exactly where they are the same as we wanna be.
Now, what are, what are the issues, Amanda, that we, we need to take into consideration? When you're doing this analysis for two thousand and twelve to two thousand and seventeen, five years, how many employees have, has the district gained? You know, I know that, you know, I always go back, I, 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 I refer back to the analogy, analogy, analogy that we have. Somehow or another, you know, Westaco has four hundred plus employees less than us, and they have more students. You know, how are they able to function with less workers, more students? You know, and, uh, from what I've, I've, I've seen, it's about an eight million dollar, you know, uh, stuff, just on salaries alone. You know, then fringe benefits, insurance, you know, those four hundred plus employees that we have, it just multiplies our expenses, you know? So that's something that I've, I've never, is that, I, I wish I could, you know, find out, you know, why is it that we have so many employees more than Westaco, or Westaco has that? You know, I don't have the ever, I mean, I, I know, but I actually haven't asked.
Well, I did, uh, I did ask Tazby if they had any resources to come in and, and do an, evaluate, um, where we may be overstaffed, and they now only look at auxiliary, they also look at the classrooms, and they also look at teachers.
Because we have a lot of, because we have special accommodations, um, our district has a lot of, a variety of students, you know, so, yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, I think that you, you've got the analogy that Westaco is a different, a different animal than Donna, but, you know, we're right next to each other. I don't think that, that, that they're that much different. I mean, you know, uh, I know that one of the areas that we're, we have a lot of staffing and the special ed, you know, and, uh, and we need it, we need it, do we really need it? Yes or no?
Well, the, the special ed is, uh, is geared by, by federal and state law, I mean, and there's, um, if a committee says that we need a, a shadow, for example, then we've got to provide that shadow. Um, we had a, a situation last year that we had to get a private nurse for a kid or a child, and, uh, we tried and tried to kind of maneuver around it, but eventually we had to take the nurse.
So that's what it is. But, you know, I mean, I think, I think that we probably, like I said, if, if, I mean, if you have such, so much credence on, on Tazby, you know, I mean, do we really need to have them come in and do an evaluation of our district, and have them give us a...
Well, yeah, well, Tazby has, I mean, they're specialists, I mean, they have people that actually come in and look at, and they, they, that's what they do. They go everywhere and evaluate the population.
Can they do a, an overview, I mean, without actually sending someone down here to actually, based on our, 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 our numbers that we send out to them? And, you know, you can tell, okay, this is what we have, take, take a, take a look at it, give us an analysis. I mean, where are we heavy...
Unfortunately, to do a comprehensive evaluation, it's, it costs money. I think the last, what we had was twenty-nine...
I don't know why we beat, I don't know why we beat around the bush about this, we all know we're overstaffed. I mean, it's very simple in the real world, is actually go down to every darn department and look at all the dang clerks, secretaries, all these people that's not needed, and you guys can go in with your analogy, but I'm sorry, I don't think like y'all. We're just overstaffed, and nobody wants to admit it, and we're paying millions for this, and it's coming out of our expenditures for the bottom line of our children. And again, you know, we've talked about this ever since I've been on board, and we've not been able to do a darn thing about it, and we've talked, and talked, and talked, and talked. And personally, I'm fed up with, with the talk, you know, I don't wanna hear it anymore. If we need to cut this back, that's good, get it done.
I'll do it.
I wish it were that simple, I mean, I really do. I mean, in the real world, I would, it would have been longer.
What's on it?
We're just constantly, constantly, I know they go, "You're looking at me, I need to shut up," but I'm just frustrated with, with the talk. We need to, we need to have action instead of just repeating ourselves over and over, overstaffed.
Any more questions on the insurance?
I, help me understand which line item that the health insurance relates to with, um, when I go back to the budget?
It is, well, it's been with the personnel, the sixty-one hundred, when they run out, when we run the personnel budget, all the friends and sisters in that.
Oh, the health insurance is a part of, uh, um, which these are, this is the sixty, this is the sub, the code's in sixty-one hundred, right?
Yes.
So it's not, it's not like a separate, like, code or anything?
No, it's, it's...
It's part of, uh, it's part of the personnel?
Yeah, personnel.
Right, okay. That's what I was wondering.
Mr. Manitas, um, to your department, is there a way for you to get a, a total number of employees by the department?
Yes.
Do you need to get a, get a copy of that?
One of the, the questions, um, I know Mr. Guerrero had asked me, Ms. Ridenrow, about what medication, some of the medications that we had discussed at one of our previous, uh, insurance meetings, that really did not need to be covered, I mean, no other insurance covers...
We were just recently asked about, um, it's kind of...
Antacid or something?
Not, excuse me.
Anti-acid.
The anti-acids and the, uh, those, these are all the kind of drugs that they can request, uh, and the other, the other...
Right, and you mentioned that, I said, no other insurance covers this, so I don't see why our district would have to cover it.
Right, uh, I believe, uh, administration, um, we went ahead and, and stopped the, the anti-acid, and then there was a, a reduction, reduction on that, uh...
Other group, though?
Yeah, a, a significant reduction, because the cost wasn't very much, it wasn't very impactful, it was minimal. Um, but there was, obviously, there's obviously a need for it, so the, the patient itself will have to pay more of a cost than before.
Okay, again, it's like most insurances that I know, we're not covering.
And, and both, uh, actually Maxwar and our new carrier, we're both recommending to look at it and see what we want to do with it.
Oh, question, Amanda.
Any other questions on the budget pertaining to the budget? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
General. Okay, uh, at this time, we're gonna go into executive session as authorized by Texas Government Code, section five-five-one, dot oh-seven-one, oh-seven-two, oh-seven-three, oh-seven-one, oh-seven-five, oh-seven-six, oh-eight-two, oh-eight-three, and oh-eight-four. The time is being waited. Thank you. Ten sixteen, we're back into open session.
Mr. President, trustees, open session, letter A, discussion and possible action to approve superintendent's recommendation of personnel. Administration recommends, as discussed in executive session.
Is there a recommendation to approve? Correct. Motion made by Mr. Guerrero. Second. Second by Mr. Billman, all in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Motion carries.
Letter B, Mr. President, trustees, discussion and possible action to approve district personnel. Administration recommends to approve as discussed in executive session.
Is there a recommendation to approve?
I move.
The motion by Dr. Mary.
Second.
Second by Mr. Billman, all in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Favor. Motion carries.
Mr. President, trustees, letter C, discussion and possible action to approve pending or con, contemplated litigation settlement matters and/or matters where the professional community under state board requires private consultation from the school attorney? No action, no action on that, trustees.
Okay, do you need a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Motion by Dr. Mary.
Second.
Second by Mel, Guerrero, all in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.